Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting. It is Wednesday, August 13th. Are we in compliance with open meeting laws?
Yes, we are.
Take the roll call, please.
Do it.
Here.
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 And if you'd all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Dr. Davis, the land acknowledgement.
As we gather today, we'd like to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we're on the ancestral homelands of the Ho'ok'unk' nation and the Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin. We lived along the western shores of Lake Winnebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge these indigenous sovereign communities who have stewarded this land throughout the generations and pay respect to their elders, past and present. We welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship of these lands.
Thank you. And approval of agenda. Would I would like to change the order of any items on the agenda? Okay. We'll keep it as presented. Board President's Report. First of all, I want to welcome everybody back after a month off of board meetings. So, welcome back, community. Welcome back, board. It's exciting to be back. And the first item we have is recognition of retirement. We have one retiree, and it's Brenda J. Smith. She is a food service supervisor at Oshkosh West High School and has been with the district since 1999. Does anyone know Brenda, like to say some words about Brenda? Dr. Herzak.
I don't recall working directly with Brenda, but like with all of our retirees, I like to wish all of our retirees the very best for a long, healthy, happy retirement and to thank them for their contributions for the success of our students and to all they've done to promote student learning and growth in our district. So, congratulations Brenda on your retirement.
Very much so. And the next thing we have is the mission moment, and this was brought to us by Mrs. Smiltnik. And I wanted to talk a little bit about the Adam Gunlock Memorial Swim Meet, which was held earlier this summer. It was the 20th anniversary of the swim meet. You can see from the wonderful pictures, the good time that was had by all. It's hosted by the rec department, and it was written on Facebook that it's honoring two decades of Adam's legacy through community, competition, and heart. And I thought that was such a nice statement. Coach Boers and the rec department staff, along with Dave and Marcy Gunlock and their families, are so dedicated to the meet and keep it alive and thus keep the memory of Adam alive. They incorporate all the lifeguards from Pollock Pool, community sponsors, community volunteers, and I've heard that emotions were running high. There were tears, there was laughter, there was cheering, and it was a very inspirational event. And most importantly, everybody had fun. So, this is our mission moment, the Adam Gunlock Memorial Swim Meet. And now we'll turn it off to the superintendent. Superintendent's Good News Report.
Yeah, a lot of good news going out throughout the district and throughout the communities. So, before we get into the first one, welcoming our staff back, I'll just want to do a quick shout out to all of our volunteers and staff members who came in today for our back-to-school fair. So, we had an opportunity at North High School for many families to come in and get some much-needed supplies, and we had a lot of different things going on, so just want to shout out that. You know, when you walk in certain places, you get particular smells. So, when you walk in a high school, like whether it's Monroe High School or whether it's Oshkosh North High School, you kind of have that, you know, somewhere between a hallway and wax on a gym floor, and it's like this combination of things. What struck me today when I was over at North in the back-to-school fair was, you know, walking in North High School, and it's got, you know, it's got that high school smell to it. And we had an opportunity today to have a barber shop in one of the rooms. And so, when I walked in, there were six kids that were getting their haircut, and I walked into that space, and it smelled like a barber shop.
Oh.
Like there was barber shop smells going on. So, just really cool ways to diversify our spaces, to be able to just help needs of our kids and families and get them ready to go for a couple of weeks here as school kicks off. So, just a quick shout out for our back-to-school fair. And Tyrese Halliburton also did some sponsorship of that event, so we thank him for that. And there's a lot of Puma brand backpacks. You know, his presence is with us. So, moving into the slides, we're thrilled to welcome the new class of educators to our district. This week, our 2025 New Teacher Academy kicked off with a heartfelt clapping from all of our administrators, which is a tradition, where our district leaders greeted both the new and experienced staff members as they came in to begin their professional development. So, these new staff members are participating in valuable training to prepare them for the upcoming school year, and we're excited to see the positive impact that they have for our kids across our district. It's been, again, a busy and productive start to the new school year. We had our dedicated school secretaries and office staff have returned, completing their professional development and training sessions to ensure that our schools run smoothly. Our district administrators have also been engaged in important professional development as we recently wrapped up our Day Two and Day Three of our summer administrative academy. So, this crucial planning and training sets up our leaders for an impactful school year as we're coming up. So, we just thank everybody. We know that it feels like school's not in session during the summer, but for all of our adults, it really is. So, we thank everybody for their work and excited to get the school year going. Before summer school wrapped up, we had some students at Vell Phillips Middle School Design and Build Course got hands-on look at the inner workings of internal combustion engines. Students took engines apart and learned about each of the components' functions. This engaging, project-based learning experience allowed them to apply science and engineering principles in a practical way. So, very timely maybe for their lawnmowers or something they do if they're using at home. In July, we had over 150 student athletes from Oshkosh West, along with their families and coaches, had the opportunity to hear from leadership consultant and author Steve Jones. Mr. Jones led interactive group activities and shared some powerful stories to inspire students to become leaders and build a winning team culture. So, we thank Mr. Jones for his time and energy there. The summer, our students had a blast at Camp Invention. In the second session held at Menominee Elementary School, students participated in a variety of the hands-on STEM challenges, including creating their own inventions at the Penguin Lodge and Claw Arcade stations. Middle school and high school students also contributed by serving as mentors, helping those students bring their young inventive inventor creations to life. So, we're proud of all of our participants for their hard work and imagination in that process, so congratulations. Earlier this summer, the board made it possible to award Bernie Faust with an honorary diploma. In a truly inspiring moment, Bernie, a 93-year-old United States Navy veteran who served in the Korean War, receives honorary high school diploma surrounded by his friends and family. So, his journey is a powerful reminder that it's never too late to achieve your goals, and we're certainly grateful for Bernie's service to our country and to our community. So, congratulations to Bernie. This Friday, August 15th, we're celebrating a true legend in our community. We're asking anybody who is interested to come out to a special dedication ceremony honoring former Oshkosh North basketball coach Frank Shady. For over 30 years, Coach Shady built a legacy of excellence, and now we're officially dedicating the Oshkosh North Fieldhouse to his name. This event will feature speeches from former players, including a special appearance by NBA star and Oshkosh North alumni Tyrese Halliburton. Doors open at 6:00 PM, and the events start at 6:30 at the new Frank Shady Fieldhouse. So, please come and join us. And finally, just some activities that I've been fortunate enough to participate in over the summer. So, looking forward to a strong start to our school year. And that concludes the superintendent's Good News Report for tonight.
Thank you very much. And now we'll move to District Administrator's Supplemental Reports. First one is the verbal report from July 9th, Board Listening Session. Dr. Coleman.
Good evening to the board. I'll provide an overview of the topics that were discussed at the listening session, and I'll provide this overview also just with the understanding that these topics were discussed and followed up on today at today's listening session, which is what those action items were. If you have any specific questions about what the follow-up action items were, I'm happy to respond to that, but in the spirit of brevity, I'll just talk about what we discussed. So, summary of the, there were four community members who provided feedback or posed questions. Some of those questions included insights about the data and training needs, particularly around interests in identifying which staff members may benefit from additional training as a result of the number of behavior or discipline referrals entered by staff. Another question was around the school district's standing policies and just a call for parity and maybe even the removal of the way good-standing language is used to facilitate exclusion of students and engagement opportunities. Additionally, there was a question about school resource officer memorandum and specifically a question about the timeline and updates for when stakeholder engagement and the criteria for determining school resource officer fit would be discussed. And so, we just provided some insight tonight about what our plans are to engage the community, stakeholders, students, members of our SRO, and reviewing the MOU, and then as we prepare for later this fall for providing recommendations to update our MOU. There was also a question about the behavior referral process and a request for clarification on who can submit behavior referrals and the roles that administrators play in approving or removing them, and whether parents are notified if a referral is deleted. There were concerns raised about the increased suspensions for students who are Black or two or more races and interest in what's being used to help develop our staff around discipline and engagement strategies as a way to decrease exclusionary discipline-like suspensions, particularly for our students who are Black or two or more races. There's a question about the Wayfinder Program. Wayfinder is the secondary or middle and high school social-emotional learning curriculum and just an ask for us to monitor and collect evidence on the success and efficacy of that social and emotional learning curriculum. And our commitment is that as we begin our launch of that this coming school year, that we will get feedback from staff and from students, as well as monitor student engagement and discipline data to determine the impact of that curriculum. There was also questions about clarity and an ask for consistency regarding the cellphone policies and being upfront with what our non-negotiables are for cellphone use across our schools. And then lastly, there were discussions about whether or not students who have frequent suspensions require more SEL support or if there are other unmet needs beyond social-emotional learning that the school district and schools particularly are working to address. And those unmet needs could be either around staff skill and engagement or student needs that manifest as behaviors. That concludes the summary of topics that we discussed at the listening session. Again, there were answers and responses to each of these provided in detail at today's listening session. If you have any questions about what those are, I'm happy to provide those responses now, or I can send that to President Wyman.
That'd be great if you would send a copy of that, and I'd like to know what some of the answers are. It seemed like there were a lot of topics, so that would be, I think, important for the board to know what some of the responses were. Thank you very much for following up on all those topics.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman.
Okay, referendum update. Mr. Nihans.
Good evening. So, today's referendum update, I will provide the update on Phase Two and what's happened over the last month, and then Mr. Fox will give an update to the board on what's been going on at the Vell Phillips Track site as we wrap up or make progress in that project as well. So, again, the Phase Two updates for the community, you can go on the school district website. We've got a tab up at the top for Phase Two updates, and we can scroll down. There's lots of different resources on how you can stay updated. So, we are in the update in August. So, this report is primarily going to be dealing with the Carl Trager addition. You can see the rendering. Again, the idea behind this is trying to make the new portion of the wing of the building to blend in with the current existing building. So, the look of this is hopefully very similar to what we have in the rest of the building. With the small little insert, you can see where it is and then where the new hardscape for the playground will be. And then the playground itself will be remade in the current footprint or right about the same current footprint we currently exist. During construction in the school year, there will be disruption to the hardscape for sure, where the school will, during school, they're going to have to find a different hardscape, and we've been talking with them and working with them on where that location would be for that. Don't think the playground itself's going to be as disrupted, but there is the potential that a portion of the playground that sometimes has to be shut down as well due to construction There is a, we've been working hard with the city also to address the traffic concerns that we've been experiencing over there pretty much since the building was built over on 20th Avenue. So, there is a community meeting August 19th at 5:30 PM at the Carl Trager Cafeteria. This would be the second meeting we've had like this for the neighbors to really go through what the architectural plans are for the traffic, how that's going to flow into the site itself, and what the parking and the traffic flow for apparent student drop-off is going to look like. And once we get feedback from the community there, it'll go to a city meeting and go through their planning and hopefully gain approval from common council to be able to proceed. Any questions at all on this portion of our update? And I'll turn it over to Mr. Fox for update on the track project.
Thank you. Good evening. Just want to bring the board up to speed with where we are with the construction on the Vell Phillips Track and Field. As you may recall, we had some delays getting started as we transitioned from demolition into full construction. There were some fill issues and some elevation issues in terms of where the fill level was at. Took a while for our current contractor, NEA Northeast Asphalt. We worked through the engineering part with POB, the architectural firm for that site. So, the project really was delayed from the start. We did get that corrected. We did get the bad fill off the site. We got the proper fill imported, graded, and leveled, as you can see if you're driving by. So, that was a delay from the project right from the start. We were able to migrate through the project from phase to phase. You can see the gravel down for the track base. You can see the football field is just about 100% complete. Irrigation heads are in. But the project is running late. Currently, we anticipate having the basketball court complete for day one of school. We're targeting August 30th right now. That's full asphalt, basketball hoops, fencing, everything, and full concrete, so it should be accessible for the students. The garage, I anticipate being complete about the second week of September. And the associated hardscape, there's a lot of concrete surrounding the garage. If you recall the drawing, it butts up to the asphalt track. The drains are in for the track, so all of our underground infrastructure is there. And then I'm anticipating about the third week of September is when you'll see the total project complete. So, this, just a reminder, as you've looked at past projects, you know, sometimes you see them moving quite quickly, and sometimes you just, you feel like there's a pause. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of work being done right now, but when they start pouring concrete and the asphalt machines show up, you're going to see a pretty rapid conclusion of that project as well as with the restoration work. The team just finished up, the masonry team just finished up the garage today. They will be transitioning over to start the memorial next week.
That's great.
Questions on that project right now?
Will we be having a dedication for the memorial?
Yeah, we will be having a dedication and getting some information out shortly on that.
Go ahead.
Do you anticipate that, ideally finishing around the third week of school, do you anticipate that the kids, the school will be able to use it starting at that point? Or will they, like, I just remember a couple of years ago when they redid the track around the Titan Stadium, like, there was limited accessibility to it as it said or whatever. When, like, at what point do you think that the school and the district will be able to use the site?
The?
The track area?
The track?
Yeah.
The track will likely remain close to the community potentially. I think this will be an ongoing discussion because of the restoration work that's going to have to happen. We will have to fence off the newly seeded area from the sidewalks, and we'll be actively watering and doing things like that. So, the basketball hoops in that area will be open for students. I think depending on what the fall looks like and how the grass comes in, we're definitely targeting spring for school track and students to be able to utilize that track. I'm anticipating not allowing community access or student access to that track in the fall. It's a very short growing season. And again, with punchless items, we're going to have contractors on-site. We're going to be actively watering. I think, I think there's a lot of reasons to probably not have people on that site, but really, long-term, once we're looking at the turf, it's just going to be a matter of how late in the season can we grow this year? How bad is the winter? What does spring look like?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your work.
Thanks.
Very exciting. And Mr. Nihans, Budget Variance Report.
Yes. So, everyone was updated, and you have the staff report included in your materials for where we are at this time currently looking. So, we, the budget deficit is increased from where we had been projecting prior. So, there is a question that I had received recently on whether this is a structural issue or where does that fall? There is a structural aspect to this. I do think as we look at the next two budget cycles coming up, the structural aspect of what we have going is going to be diminished because, for the reason of the revenue side of the equation from the state isn't growing to CPI level, but the increases in the special ed reimbursement are providing additional revenues that help kind of lift that revenue increase that the district's going to get, at least relief within Fund 10 and in the operation funds, where that's going to assist some of the structural. But the structural, a large part of the structural aspect that we're dealing with right now, and we will have more detailed discussions at Facility and Finance coming up, is we've been increasing our expenses overall more than what we've been getting in revenue from the state. So, revenue from the state for this upcoming year, you're looking at about a 2.8% increase, which is less than CPI. And we were giving CPI plus step in lane, so automatically you're in a structural problem. So, we still, again, details are going to be coming as we work through this at Facilities and Finance in the upcoming months, but there is some of a structural aspect to what we're dealing with that we're going to have to face. So, that being said, just want to also kind of provide you a little bit more information and detail within the budget. We've had discussions over the last several months about the performance of the health plan and the OPEB that was, we talked about a month or two ago, which really the OPEB is the retiree health claims. Those increased. We don't really see those projecting to increase like that or stay at that same level next year. This was the one year out of the last four where it's been elevated, so we would anticipate that that claim amount comes back down to what we saw the three other years. So, we're not increasing next year's OPEB budget amount. We're making that similar to what we were this year. The health plan itself, we are increasing, we're able to increase that budget for next year. But I also want to provide some perspective on the health plan and the performance. We ended the year with $22.9 million in health plan expenses overall. In perspective, in '22, '23, we had $26.5 million of health claims. So, over a three-year period, we've actually reduced our health costs by 13.6% actual costs. That is not a common theme in health costs and health plans, whether you're self-insured or fully insured. Typically, you are seeing 7% to 15% increases annually, not decreases of 13% over a three-year period. So, it's not that our health plan's running really poorly and that we're out of control. Again, I budgeted more aggressively. Our goal has been to try to get this down to the $18 million range. I think realistically, we can get to that. I tried to get there a little quicker than I probably should have. So, just want to make sure there's some perspective around the health plan, and it doesn't get out that staff think our health plan's blown up and it's all woe is us. The health plan has been running well, and I think we're in a good spot for next year, and we'll talk about tomorrow at Facilities and Finance as we look at next year's budget proposal, that we've been able to correct some of that budgeting from mistake that I made from this year. Another thing, just wanted to touch base on is part of the staff report, it talked about our fund balance dipping below the 12% minimum that we have in policy. And just to communicate with the board, one thing we are going to have to do as we look at future budgets is be intentional about how do we build that balance back up and put those into future budgets and show that we are doing that. And one thing Dr. Davis and I have talked about is coming up with a mechanism within our monthly budget variance reports to be able to have a tracker on that, to be able to show as we're giving that variance report, how does that actually show with where our goal is for that year? If we're trying to add half a million dollars to the surplus, where does that monthly look at and how are we tracking to that to make sure that that also becomes a, something that we're regularly keeping track and talking about? Any questions at all?
I have a few. I guess I could start. One question, the $300,000 for homeless transportation. Does the district go and, how is that in addition to, and I believe our homeless students should get transported to school for sure, but do we go and find and seek out where they are and pick them up, or how is that additional from our regular bus routes?
So, where that budget lies, we have a dollar amount that we budget, and it's honestly kind of a, try to make it as much of an educated guess as we can. You never really know how many homeless students you're going to have throughout the school year. That number fluctuates greatly. For this fiscal year, a lot of the overage of budget that happened was Cobison only has so much capacity, and when you end up with students all over the area and sometimes not even in the city of Oshkosh, and we have to transport them back because there are responsibility legally, and we have to legally provide them transportation back to where their last home school was.
How far can that be sometimes?
It can be several communities away. It's not, McKinney-Vento doesn't just confine us to our district. So, if a family did reside here, they become homeless and their homeless location is now in Berlin. We have to provide them transportation if they want to come back.
McKinney-Vento is the federal legislation around homeless.
Correct. So, there's laws and regulations. So, what happens is if Cobison doesn't have capacity, they've run out of capacity to provide transportation, we contract with other contracted services. Everdriven is one of our bigger contractors that we have. Everdriven is one of our bigger contractors that we have. And this ends up, depending on the numbers we have, it gets costly quickly. So we just, this was a larger year for us for that, so.
Thanks, thanks for that background information on that. So when I see us being over budget this much, that leads me to believe that it, some of it does have to be structural. And I appreciate the health insurance coming down, and I'm sure we budgeted that it would come down more, like you said. But I'm curious, because we're going to, in our new budget, we're going to have to, we're going to have to put some, you know, cost of living increases in there and whatnot. But how much is the extra money we're going to be getting for special education, do you know? Like, will that offset, how much will that structurally offset this structural deficit? Or are we looking at having to do some more hard things?
For the '25, '26 proposed budget, currently, I believe we're in a good spot for '25, '26. Again, we'll be going through in the morning, we'll be going through more of those details. But again, we've, we've been able to source, just, so, so as we look at some of our areas that we, we struggled with in the current fiscal year, the fiscal year we just ended. When we look at the, the benefit plan, we talked about the, the health plan and we're, we're adjusting that budget. So we're budgeting right now $22.6 million for '25, '26. This year's actual was $22.9. And we're looking at a, potentially a couple of plan design changes that would do some more incentivizing to utilize the plan the way we're intending to come January. So we're, we're in a much better place as far as our health plan goes, budgeting wise, compared to where we probably realistically are going to end. Purchase Services was another area where we had a fairly significant overage. And we ended this year at $25.4 million combined operationally for Purchase Services. We're budgeting currently $28.3 million for '25, '26. So I think with our budgeting process, again, we had a couple of things going on over the last two years. We, we had restructuring and re, reaccounting of how our new structure fits within the locations and line items of where everyone oversaw accounts. We had a restructuring of that and a beginning of zero-based budgeting. So we had some misses within who was accountable the year prior to who was going to take accountable, accountability for it and how those budgets got built. There was just a lot of moving parts over that. I believe as we look at next year's budget, a lot of that got settled out because we had another year of experience within the new structure and the new account structure. So I, I think we're in a much better place with that, but we still have structural issues and concerns. I just, I, I don't think they're in the same areas as where we struggled this year financially.
Okay. Yeah, it's, and in the next budget, I'll be looking for us to try to get our fund balance back up again, right? And then hopefully, we're in a good place structurally with, you know, some cost of living increases and whatnot. So I guess we'll have to have a lot more discussions, but thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else? Sounds like there'll be more discussions tomorrow at Facilities.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my only comment is, it's, I, I mean, I expected some of this. I was a little bit surprised that it ballooned so much in the last month or so. I kind of wish we had known more of this before this month. I don't know if there would have been any needed changes or anything, but for what reasons is it that we didn't know until this point that it, because we were getting budget variance reports monthly, and this is a pretty much, I think at least double what we have been hearing in those, what happens in the last couple of months that, that, that the balloon happens? Just the end of the year, if we finally know? Or is there more that we can do so that next year, we don't have this balloon occur? Or at least we have knowledge of it coming in?
Yeah. I think a lot of the, the last minute part of this was more with the health plan. And, and even when we were talking a little bit that the health plan was not trending as well, it was really towards the end where we really got the, the OPEB portion of it, the retiree portion of it, didn't really come out until a month or two, I think it was two months ago. And then from the time the OPEB number came out until the beginning of July, there's, there's always within a health plan, there's, there's a lag in claims. So there's anywhere between a 30 and a 90-day lag from the provider to actually submit the claim, for it to go through our process to hit us. In that time window, we had some significant weeks of claims. Typically, a week of claims for us is in the $400,000 to $500,000 range. We had a week of $1,008,000 that came in and end of May, beginning of June. And then we got followed that up with like two or three weeks later with $1,000,000. And that got followed up with by $800,000 or $900,000. So we had an additional $3 million pour into the health plan within like a six-week period that we don't get notice. And we, we got a little bit of notice on those just because that's such an unusual pull. They didn't want it to default at the bank, or not default to the bank. They didn't want us to stop it because a payment that large from the bank would be atypical. So we have positive pay, they would say, uh-uh, and have to go to Kelly for approval. So they reached out to Kelly and just said, hey, heads up, this is what we're going to do. Is it okay tomorrow? Kind of a thing. But those were things that just happened so, so quickly that there's really not time for it to get any better time than, than what we did. I, I had reached out to Dr. Davis as soon as we got the numbers that were calculated, that we were confident of where it's going to be when, when we get some of the grants and money to come through and made sure that we were not missing any revenue or any other expenses, where we could actually give a solid enough number that we were, we were sure is going to be in that area. So unfortunately, just the timing this year really ended up being, it was very late and I understand that, but I couldn't have gotten you anything earlier without having a lot of questions or potential for it to fluctuate.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one quick question, and sorry, this may be too in the weeds, but so our fund balance policy says it's 12% of our operating budget? Is that, that's what we need to maintain?
12%, 12% of Fund 10 expenses.
Of the Fund 10 expenses. Okay, so it's the expense side. Okay.
Yes. It's actual, it's, it's actual expense.
Okay. So do you have another number offhand? I can calculate it if you don't. No worries.
I don't.
I have a calculator at home.
Yeah, I believe, I believe we're about like in that million and a half range is, is what we're looking at.
Okay.
But don't, don't quote me on that.
No, all good. Thank you.
It's policy 6235, in case anyone.
Know the policy.
I saw it. Perfect. Is it really for sure in there? It's in there.
Okay, we'll talk more tomorrow morning. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. And next we have agenda, non-agenda related public forum. We have no one this evening for agenda-related public forum, and we have one person for non-agenda-related public forum, and Mr. Took. We have three minutes.
All right. I'm Mr. Took. I'm Matt Took from Oshkosh here. Just came here today. I've had kids in the school district for over 20 years. And in that time, I've seen so many of the so-called latest and greatest ideas sort of implemented into the curriculum. And I just wanted to kind of go through some of those today. First one is the elimination of phonics, which has been a disaster for reading performance as illustrated by the fact that we've actually had to readopt it. We've seen the elimination of cursive or what was called Denelian. And we see this evidenced in the fact that our young people can't sign their name on documents. We've all kind of witnessed this. We've seen the elimination of spelling and spelling tests that we all grew up with. This has robbed kids of the ability to handwrite a letter or a note. We've seen the introduction of new math, which has driven a wedge between parents and children because parents are no longer able to sit at the kitchen table like they did for generations and show kids how to do long division, et cetera. We have seen the introduction of vulgar material into our reading materials as evidenced by what I brought up last year and the books that I raised and the pictures and sexual depictions that I showed you in picture. We implemented things like lockdowns and maskings in the greatest social experiment that we've ever embarked on. And to the point where we have kids that are referred to as COVID kids that don't have the social skills. So at every turn, we've had parents like myself and many others who are loving and involved parents that have said, wait, slow down. Where are these ideas coming from? You know, before you tear something down, you always ask yourself, why was it here in the first place? And at every turn, we were called extreme, we're called angry. And following the latest and trendy and new ideas gotten us in an academic mess. Over half of the students are not meeting standards in reading or math. Approximately 20% are in the lowest category. And if you approximate that out over the class of 2025, approximately 100 of those kids that we stood and clapped for at the arena in June cannot do math or reading at a basic level. And we clapped as they walked across the stage. It's time we get our priorities back in line. God bless. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now we have a workshop with the safety plan. Dr. Coleman.
Good evening again. It's my pleasure to provide an overview of the school district's safety plan. We'll start with just an overview of our vision. We'll be the leader in education through innovation while focusing on the whole child. Our core values, engaged students and staff, integrity, excellence, responsive improvement, safe learning and working environment, which we'll talk about in a moment, collaborative culture. And our mission is we will enrich our community by supporting our students to lead creative and empowered lives, and our guiding principle is students first. The key performance indicator core area that we'll focus on is safe and healthy schools, with our safety plan being 40% of that star rating. The Oshkosh Area School District has a comprehensive safety plan that reflects state requirements including safety drills, school safety evaluations, professional development, safety training, collaboration with local law enforcement, and emergency management agencies. The Oshkosh Area School District Safety Plan is reviewed annually by the board per district policy. And the Oshkosh Area School District is reviewed by the Office of School Safety for compliance with Wisconsin State Statute 1807, formerly known as Act 143. This matters because our school safety plans and training support students and staff to be prepared, to help them stay calm and to feel safe in the time of crisis should a crisis occur. Strong school safety plans allow stakeholders to focus on maintaining a safe school environment for optimal learning. And the Oshkosh Area School District Safety Plans are based on the emergency management framework from FEMA. And that framework includes a focus on prevention, mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery. The Oshkosh Area School District's Safety Plan is at a five-star rating, and this is evidenced by a safety plan existing, is reviewed and adopted annually, and safety audit items and all drills are completed. The Oshkosh Area School District's Emergency Preparedness Collaborative Operations Team, we refer to that as our EPCOT team, serves as Wisconsin's model district for emergency preparedness through a proven partnership with law enforcement, featuring monthly safety trainings and cross-agency coordination. The Oshkosh Area School District received nearly a $1 million Bureau of Justice Assistance Grant, the Stop School Violence Grant, to enhance universal district-wide social and emotional learning. And our gratitude goes to Director Kammerer for his work and his team's work on securing that grant. The purpose of this grant is to support, again, social and emotional learning strategies, mental health and trauma response, and we have that grant through 2027. Additionally, the use of that grant will support training and allow us to facilitate full-scale response exercises with law enforcement and community-based organizations. This seems to be in different order there with... All right, well, I'll go to celebrations. The Oshkosh Area School District's, okay, so our strategies to improve would be our work with community partners to revise school resource officers, our MOU. We talked about that at length at tonight's listening session. And also aligning our MOU with Oshkosh Area School District policies and ensuring that effective practices in emergency response and community expectations of law enforcement interactions occur according to our standards in schools. Another area for improvement is to execute one full-scale emergency response exercise with county, with our county-level EPCOT team. And then another strategy that we will engage in is to complete required safety audits per Wisconsin Office of School Safety at the secondary level for the '25, '26 school year. Elementary levels, those will be completed by the '26, '27 school year. There are a number of steps that we have identified for review for monitoring and ongoing action. Those steps include quarterly reviews established between the Oshkosh Area School District, the Oshkosh Police Department, specifically on our school resource officers, including monitoring data on calls for service and citations disaggregated by school. On February 27th, 2025, a mid-year review and tabletop exercise was conducted with Oshkosh Area School District administrators, deans, teacher leaders, school resource officers, and leadership from our Oshkosh Police Department with the emphasis on school district, with compliance with our district policy 5540. In March of this year, the Oshkosh Area School District's secondary administrators and members of the executive team, along with Oshkosh Police Department, school resource officers, met to complete the following steps. First, to clarify the roles and responsibilities of school resource officers and administrators. Also, to review and clarify Oshkosh Area School District Policy 5540 and 554001, and those policies pertaining to school resource officer interviews and investigations that will occur on school premises. As well as to follow up with the February 7th School Resource Officer Media Review and Tabletop Exercise. Dr. Davis and Chief Smith provided a joint statement on their belief that school resource officers are valuable and will remain in schools. They also stated that inconsistencies between policy and practice need to be addressed with the possibility of changes proposed to the Policy and Governance Committee. Finally, Dr. Davis and Chief Smith affirmed that students should be encouraged to trust and reach out to school resource officers, and that SROs play a crucial role in working with youth, and that policy inconsistencies may be due to different interpretations and alignment is necessary moving forward. The School Resource Officer Annual Report will be presented to the Finance and Facility Committee in the fall of 2025. Additional action steps include an update to the visitor check-in and check-out for staff visiting the buildings. And additional updates are, Oshkosh Area School District employees and daily substitutes visiting the school are required to check in and out. Additionally, visiting OSD employees can check in via the main office, or there are QR code options available for check-in. There are some additional procedures... There are some additional procedures that you see indicated here, and this is specifically to ensure that there is a tracking mechanism that we have for visitors who are in our building, as well as students who are in our building for after-school or recreational programs. These procedures meet the requirements of Oshkosh Area School District Policy 9150, and that policy pertains to school visitors, and OSD Policy 7440, and that pertains to our facility's security. Lastly, locked doors and secure entries in all exits, as well as controlled access to buildings is a key safety strategy. Regarding upcoming trainings, the Oshkosh Area School District administrators, deans, and school resource officers, and other law enforcement leaders will participate in an annual emergency preparedness training tomorrow. That training is a full-day training, including ongoing learning about the use of tactical radio expectations, our ALICE training protocol, that stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, Evacuate, our Behavior Threat Assessment Monitoring Training, a review of school district policies, and a walkthrough of our reunification sites and processes in the event that we would need to evacuate. The Oshkosh Area School District Executive Team will also participate in tabletop exercises that requires team members to demonstrate knowledge of the safety plan and their role in emergency response. We'll do that in August. And then all Oshkosh Area School District staff will complete ALICE training, they'll conduct drills, and engage in at least one tabletop exercise at their school building. In the event that you are interested in looking at a video on our safety plan and our emergency response plan, we have that available on the district website. Additionally, we encourage and invite the use of our Speak Up, Speak Out application, also known as SUSO. The Speak Up, Speak Out tip line created by the Wisconsin Department of Justice, students, parents, school staff, or any community member can anonymously submit a school safety concern or threat. The Speak Up, Speak Out Resource Center staff work around the clock, 24 hours a day, every day of the year, to respond to tips and to deploy a response locally by communicating directly with school administrators and local law enforcement. Once a tip is submitted, the submitters requested that they would keep their chat window open, in the event that there are needs for additional follow-up. At this time, I'm happy to entertain any questions that you might have, or provide clarity on any of the information presented.
We've had quite good success with the SUSO program, haven't we?
I, I would say so. And we certainly applaud students, parents, and community members for their use of the SUSO app. We've been able to be preventative and get ahead of potential threats or concerns, or to provide help through our reports that come in through that application. We continue to make our students aware of the responsible use of this application, and we have postings up around the schools to, to make sure that students are aware that this is a way for them to anonymously report. Additionally, we also would like for students to leverage their relationships with trusted adults, in the event that they don't have immediate access to a device to provide that communication to a trusted adult at home or at school.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Yes, is this, I mean, would you view this primarily as a compliance exercise?
So we are required by district policy to provide a school safety plan that the school board reviews and approves each year. So there is a compliance aspect to this, but beyond that, I would say that this is a responsibility that we have to ensure that the, to honor our district's core value around a safe learning and working environment.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate that. And I ask that only because I, you know, if you would just pull me off the street, especially before I come on the school board and ask me, you know, what, what do you worry about in school safety? I'm like, well, it's kids fighting at school. That's why parents don't want their kids to go here. That's why kids aren't getting the learning they want, and I know that's, or that they deserve, right? So I know that's different than here, but I, I hope that there's a way us as a board can start maybe thinking a little more comprehensively, the way we describe our, our safety plan. And I realize that we, we do incorporate these things, so I'm rambling up dead. So I'm, I'm thankful that you, you confirmed that this is definitely, at least begins as a compliance exercise.
Yes, and, and policy 8420 is the district's policy by which we engage in this, the compliance component of this exercise. But again, we also see this as a commitment to honoring our district's core value. And your point is taken, that there are certain elements around school safety that don't pertain to this plan, and those aren't things that we ignore, but certainly, they, they exist in other plans around student engagement.
Oh, yeah, and to be clear, I'm looking right now at the core areas. This is just one of the, one of the metrics that we, we use, and these things are covered in other areas as well.
And I would, I would say, Mike, I think, you know, the perspective that you articulated pre-1999 would probably be how we all thought about it.
Yeah.
And then once Columbine happened, that's what really flipped the script on for public school, for schools, to be able to look at school safety as much more of a crisis response.
Yeah.
You know, active shooters became a real thing, and, and since then, it's really escalated. So, so that's the need, you know, really over, for my career, you know, over the last 25 years, that's really how this has developed into much, a much more comprehensive.
Which makes sense. A sad reality, but a reality, in laws. Thank you for that.
Well, to Mike's point, I, I've had conversations with both Dr. Coleman and Dr. Davis about the interplay that, and, and I appreciate that it's reflected in this report tonight about SROs, and, but also reminders that through policy and governance, we will be reviewing many of the, of the policies and how they're actually, most importantly, implemented in the schools to ensure school safety, whether it's bullying, whether it's fights, whether it's suspensions. I think that's all coming up throughout this year, too, and it's sort of alluded to in, in like the EPCOT plans and this, but it, you're right, it is, there is a lot more to it than just the safety plan. I shouldn't say just the safety plan, because it's a massive document already. But I think that the more that we can continue to remember that there are these various aspects of it that are very much in the kids' day-to-day lives, I think is very important, too.
Oh, yeah, and my comments are more geared toward us as a governing board than you, Dr. Coleman, doing your job, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And finally, we have the consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board's been furnished with background material on each item, it's discussed at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion.
So moved.
Second, Barb.
All right. Ford.
Aye.
RZA.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
Snutley.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Duitt.
Aye.
Resolution here is.
Thank you. So there are no individually considered resolutions. We move to, I'm going to modify this request for future committee discussion instead of agenda items. I think we decided we were going to move, send it to committee before we just automatically put it on the agenda. Does anyone have any request for future committee discussion items? Not at this time? Getting back into it? Any announcements?
Just a reminder for board members, we have a document out for school visits, just to schedule school visits. I know that was something President Wyman had as priority, so, so if we could get those set in the next week or two, if you haven't had a chance to do that, that would be, that would be great, and looking forward to seeing you out there.
And thank you very much. And I really request that you get the first visit in by Thanksgiving. Some of our visits went, including mine, into the spring season, and if we're able to do it by Thanksgiving, you may want to go back a second time to see, check on any of the discussion points that you learned about.
New guy question, Beth. Who, whom should we contact?
The principal.
The principal, just directly. Should we copy you on that, Brian? Or, yeah, okay.
And they, they, they like it. I, I try to keep mine to a half hour, and come in for 30 minutes, you know, and then let's walk through and...
My kids are already very upset because I requested their schools.
That's good.
They do have a lot of feedback form, too.
Yeah.
To kind of document what we taught.
Which is good. Okay, sir, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have... RZA.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
Snutley.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Duitt.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Nice to be back.